Okay. So, good evening, everyone. And on behalf of the Vocal Seniarity and Indivisible Bend, I'd like to welcome you to the Third Issue-Based Roundtable with progressive candidates for Bend City Council. Okay. Tonight's roundtable is being livestreamed on Indivisible Bend's Facebook page, and it's being recorded for posting on the Vocal Seniarity's YouTube channel. Each of the candidates in this roundtable has been endorsed by both Indivisible Bend and the Vocal Seniarity through their own endorsement processes. The candidates are Melanie Keebler, Anthony Broadman, Megan Perkins, and Rita Schenkelberg, who are running for Bend City Council Positions 1 to 4, respectively. Our issue tonight is housing in Bend, and we are very fortunate to have Kathy Austin as our subject matter expert and roundtable moderator. Kathy has been a licensed architect and member of the American Institute of Architects for 30 years, and is currently on the Bend Section Committee of Oregon AIA. Her professional focus has been affordable housing, first-time homebuyers and renters. She's former Planning Commissioner, City Council member, and mayor of Sebastopol, California, and has served on Bend's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee for the last four years. She advocates locally on all issues related to affordable housing. The format for tonight's roundtable is as follows. In order to provide context for the questions that will be put to the candidates, Kathy will start us off, sorry, by giving us a brief overview of housing issues facing the city of Bend. Each of the candidates will then give a short self-introduction. Kathy will then pose questions to the candidates, and each will have about two minutes to respond to each question. After those questions have been addressed, we will take questions from the chat. You may enter your questions into the chat at any time. Finally, the candidates will each give a short summary statement, and Nancy Beaver of Indivisible Bend will make closing remarks to end the session. So, Kathy?
Thank you very much. I thought it would be helpful if I give you a little information about the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and also the definition of affordable housing, so that everybody is clear on what it is that we're discussing. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee has given over $10 million in loans and grants since the inception in 1991. And the funds come from a portion of all building fees. It's 0.333% of all building application fees goes into a fund that then our committee helps advise. Some of the decisions are, some of them, we refer to the city council. So, when we talk about affordable housing, it's important to know that it's a very specific definition, and every county in the United States has its own specific information that is used to determine that. And what we usually use here in Deschutes County is a range of 30% of the median income to 80%. Some communities go up to 120. We did not. So, just so I can give you an idea of what that means locally, for a family of four, at 50% of the area median income, which I will now say AMI, earns $38,250. And at 80%, it would be $61,200. If they were a couple, they could earn anywhere from $30,600 up to $48,960. And the way we determine whether rent or mortgage is affordable is if it doesn't consume more than 30% of their gross income. So, for instance, a couple could afford a one-bedroom apartment at $734 for a 50% AMI, up to $1,192. There's not many of those around. And a home for a family of four could be up from $995 to $1,592. So, basically, what people can afford versus what they earn, there's a huge disconnect. What's available in the market right now doesn't meet the need. Our committee can help with developing affordable housing that meets up to the 80%, but we're not really tasked with addressing that middle market, middle income. And that's something that a lot of the changes that we're seeing coming from the legislature is hoping to address. And we'll talk about that a little bit in the questions that we bring up. But a workforce or a middle-income market is considered 80% to 120% of the area median income. And that's where we have a real disconnect here, a lack of affordability, because folks at that price point can't qualify for subsidized housing, but they can't afford anything that's on the market. So, we're going to be discussing a little bit about the changes that the legislature has recently approved that will hopefully help us and how Bend is meeting that. So, I wanted to get into our first question. I'm going to give you a little background and then open it up to each candidate, and I've tossed it around, so the order in which I ask you is going to change each time, so... Just to be fair. Okay, so there's a new law called HB 2001. And what that does is allow alternative housing types in zones that typically, or in the past, have been only allowing single-family detached homes. It doesn't eliminate the ability to build a single-family home, but it gives alternatives. And some of those alternatives are duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes. A new thing we're calling small homes, which are tiny homes on foundations. We can also do cottages. And later, I'm going to talk a little bit about microunits. But basically, the... All those unit types have to be allowed now on all lots that are owned for single-family, per state law. So, the city of Bend has been working through a stakeholder group, of which I'm a part, to rewrite our codes in order to comply with state code. And on August 24th, the Planning Commission voted to move forward all of the proposed changes to the city council, and they will be meeting on September 16th and hopefully approving all of these changes. So, what I wanted to ask, I'm going to start with Melanie. This is, what's your position on code changes under HB 2001? And what do you think this means for our local housing market? What are some of the benefits? And that's the same question for all four of you, but I'm going to start with Melanie.
Sure, thanks Kathy. Thanks so much, everyone, for being here today. I think this is a super-important topic, obviously, for the future of Bend. I think HB 2001 was a big step in the right direction in allowing some of this diversity of different housing types to exist in a city like Bend. The problem, and it was stated to me by a friend I was talking to who was actually an architect, is where are the starter homes in Bend? Where are the first home that a young professional, a young family, someone on a fixed income that doesn't qualify for affordable housing, as Kathy just said? Where are those homes in Bend? We have built a lot of single-family detached homes, and we've seen that our median home price in Bend has just gone up, and I just checked. It's over 500, it's about $530,000. It's the median for homes in Bend. That is out of reach for so many people that work here and, you know, want to live here. So, I think HB 2001, what it does is it allows the cities to rewrite our code, our laws, for the city, and allow a lot of these different types of housing that can be multifamily units, that can be like a townhome, that can offer a different entry into the housing market, and can bring those prices down so where they're actually accessible for people that don't qualify for affordable housing. That's the main point of this kind of missing middle, is we are doing some work subsidizing and paying to get affordable housing built for people on that lower part of the AMI scale, but the people in between are having a problem, you know, finding a place to live that will work for them or finding a place to rent that will be affordable and will be almost all of their paycheck every month. So, I think this is a great benefit for Bend's housing market. I'm really excited to see the changes. I'm hoping that the council will approve them, and we can start to see some different-looking neighborhoods, different types of density going on in Bend than we've seen in the past.
So, I was just texted to remind me that I should allow you to introduce yourself. So, after you've answered your question, please introduce yourself.
Sorry, I should have... I'll go ahead. I should have just done that. Anyway, for people that don't know me, I'm Melanie Keebler. I'm running for Position 1 on the Bend City Council. I grew up here in Bend, graduated from Bend High. I'm super-excited to bring a fresh perspective to our council and really dig in on issues like these and work to plan a really great future for our growing city. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Megan, I want you to go next.
All right. Thank you so much for this, you know, for tonight. It's such an important topic, and it's a little nerve-wracking. These are such esteemed people that are on the panel and in the audience tonight. My name is Megan Perkins. I am running for Bend City Council, Position 3. I'm the mom of three kids and the founder of a nonprofit called Embry's Bend, which has the mission of dismantling white supremacy. And I love the city, and I love its parks, its schools, its nature, its food. And I know, but I know that my experience in this city is a lot different than others. And so, I want to work for a city of Bend that growth and prosperity benefits all of us, so that we can be a city for everyone. And my three campaign values are inclusion, access, and economic equity. And affordable housing particularly is sort of in that economic equity base. So, to kind of to transition now, you know, I think we're going to say a lot of things tonight that agree. Well, you all are going to be agreeing with each other a lot tonight. So, one of the things that I would like to talk about, which is kind of what's interesting, what's happening now in Bend, you know, you think that this pandemic has this sort of economic, you know, impact on our city, but it seems like what's happening in the whole market in Bend is that we're in this huge boom. Like Melanie said, we're already at $530K or so for a single-family home. And it seems like Bend is becoming sort of even more of this Mecca for a lot of like big-city folks who love all the access to the nature, you know, and they love having an environment that is amenable to being a virtual worker. So, you know, these single-family homes are sort of flying off the market at record prices and often in cash, which is, you know, great for people who own their homes, but it's bad for anyone who, you know, what needs a mortgage is buying a first home or is trying to find a home for under, you know, $530K. So, you know, I really think that the benefit of HB, you know, 2001 is to create this real diversity of homes, right? And so, the more diverse, more different types of homes that we have, the more different people can live in these homes. And, you know, it can only make our neighborhoods better to have different, not only people from different backgrounds, but people from different income levels living in these homes. I also, I agree with Melanie, you know, there's these duplexes, triplexes, cottage homes, all this kind of stuff. It's sort of this perfect middle ground between single-family homes and huge apartment buildings, right? So, it's sort of this entry point for homeownership, which I think is really important. I think it has the benefit of potentially really being the rental market as well. And also, you know, for that professional that's sort of in the middle income, you know, that makes between, you know, $50, $80K a year, you know, they're sort of now just squeezed from above and below. And I think that HB 2001 can, you know, really help our working professionals in our city.
Thank you very much. Rita, you want to introduce yourself and then give us an answer to that question?
Yeah, that sounds great. Thanks Kathy. Hi, everyone. My name's Rita Schenkelberg, and I'm running for Position 4. My pronouns are she, her, and they, them. I'm a queer person of color who is interested in bringing a brand-new voice to the city of Bend City Council. As I learn more and more about the policies and I learn more and more about the power that Bend City Council has, it just is so incredibly important that we have diverse voices there. I'm also a renter, and so I've been here for about five years and just kind of made this decision within myself that I was never going to be able to own a home. When we look, when Melanie said the median price for a home, there was this, like flutter in my heart. I'm like, oh, yeah. I forgot. That's the number. Just half a million. It's fine. I'm a young professional. I've been in my career for a couple of years now, and I'm just like, that is not possible. And so, this change brings a little bit of light. I get really excited about having a place to call home that is just mine. You know, as a renter, you know, I have had amazing people to live with here, and I've really lucked out with landlords, and it would be really great to be able to own my own space. It would be really great to rent my own place on my own. And so, this code really gives that access. And a lot of humans that live here are really within that age group of we could afford if there were more places within that, within the duplex, the triplex, or the cottage homes that we could really rent those types of units. But then, when you look at the single-occupant homes on these lots, between the yard and the size of the homes, I mean, that's really out of our price range. And it's exciting to know that we would be in neighborhoods and not separate, because what we see in like bigger cities or in towns, these apartment buildings get kind of tucked away from everything else. And then, these homes have, you know, there's a park, there's the road, there's maybe like little tiny shops really close to the neighborhoods, and then the apartment buildings get kind of shoved away. And so, this integration is really going to bring, as Megan brought, this diversity and these different voices to the neighborhoods. And how can we really shift that culture and not just because you don't live in a single-family home that your voice is somehow separate from others? You're really bringing it all together and allowing, you know, the culture in Bend to be more inclusive. So, I'm very excited about this. I'm excited to see kind of what Bend City Council does with it, and I'm excited to hopefully have us all sitting and having this conversation on a much bigger platform soon enough. So, thank you.
That's just great. Thank you so much. So, Anthony, can you introduce yourself and give us your thoughts?
Yes, thank you Kathy. Thanks for hosting this. And thank you to Indivisible Bend and the Vocal Seniarity for this and all of the work you're doing. My name is Anthony Broadman. I'm running for Bend City Council, Position 2. I'm running because we need a safe, connected transportation network. We need actual affordable housing, so that if you live in Bend right now, you can afford to stay here. If you work here, you can stay here. And I think we need to do more as a city to bounce back, emerge from the coronavirus pandemic that we're in right now. I'm a lawyer. I represent housing authorities. I represent tribal governmental housing authorities. I come to housing and building affordable housing and workforce housing from the understanding that it's part of an exceptional city. It's part of an exceptional place to live. It's just as important, if not more important, than anything else we do in a city. So, we can have all the aspirations that we want, but the reality is if you have to drive an hour to work in Bend, we're not doing right by our citizens. As somebody who's rented and bought one home in Bend, I feel really lucky that I was here at a time when I could afford to do both of those things. If I was coming here today, I couldn't do that. And I think that that illustrates, you know, I mean, all politics is personal. But to me, that illustrates what we have done, and I would say we failed a lot of our citizens by not creating, not just affordable housing, but not creating housing in that 80% to 120%, 130%, 140% of AMI. So, that's not a... That's sort of my segue into the question, I suppose, Kathy, and that's that I wholly support the spirit of HB 2001, the letter of HB 2001. But I'll also add that it's only going to work if we, as a city, and that's the voters, elected leadership, staff, do what we need to do to create an environment where working families can afford to buy and rent in Bend. 2001's a great tool, but it's only as good as the environment we build here for developers, for builders, for families, for financing, to create the kind of homes that we know people want to and can afford to live in. It's unlike transportation. The answer is really only build, build, build. We have to build as much housing in the range which we needed. And I would argue that that's in that 80% to 120%. Or people aren't going to be able to afford to live here, period. And I say that as somebody who, you know, I want my mom to be able to afford to live here someday. I want the people who work in my office to be able to afford to live here. I want the people who work for my wife to be able to afford to live here. It's not really a conservative or a progressive issue. It's do you want to be able to have a business here? A business where people can afford to live in a complete neighborhood near where they work? I, you know, and I would say from the 2001 perspective, it's either infill or and/or complete neighborhoods where we can responsibly house ourselves in our neighbors. And one thing Kathy, I'd like to say, you know, based on 2001, I think the Affordable Housing Committee has done an extraordinary job with affordable housing. But we know we need to look at the next AMI level up. What are we going to do as a city? I would argue, expand, you know, the amounts that we're spending on that, on that level of affordable housing, workforce housing. Do more. Have a more dynamic SDC program to incent the types of development we want to build in that, in that range. I think that this comes up every four years, not unlike Mirror Pond and TRTs and Visit Bend. And we hear a lot of us say things like, we're going to fix this. But I'm committed, and I know that other folks are too, to actually taking concrete steps in the next 40 years to fix that 80% to 130% of AMI, because I think it's part of the future of our city.
It is, it is. And I think you make a good point. We've heard from the Chamber of Commerce how difficult it is. Am I muted?
I got before Kathy.
You're okay. Kathy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Okay. I apologize. I'm old. I don't know how to do this stuff. Anyway, I was just saying the Chamber of Commerce has also weighed in into the fact that they can't attract people to work in business here because they can't afford to live here. So, I'm going to segue to the next item. We're really going to talk about density, infill, sprawl, land use. We're really going to talk about density, infill, sprawl, land use. There's another bill that was passed by the legislature that really only applies to Bend just because of its parameters. It's called HB 3450. And what that will do, it'll allow standalone housing in areas of commercial zone that previously had to be part of a mixed-use development. So what that means is the central core of the Third Street from Empire down to the southern part of town and a few other locations will be allowed to have high-density housing, not single-family homes. It has to be at a higher density. This is also coupled with a, something that the city council has recently passed, which is the Tax Increment Financing District for the central core. And both of these things will allow us to increase our housing density within the city in an infill way. And given our UGB situation, I wanted to get your thoughts on how these two, the tax increment financing and the HB 3450 will impact our housing availability and affordability in town. Anthony, I'm going to ask you to keep it short, but I'm going to start with Anthony, and then it'll be Megan.
Yeah, please give me the hook if I
I'll just go.
I think that the, I'll just fast forward to what I really think is key from my perspective here. I think the BCD has the opportunity to be the jewel of Bend. It is, it is the oppor, it is an opportunity to grow intelligently while preserving livability, what we all love about this city. In the core area, TIF district plan, there are referenced relocation methods. So this tool, you know, everybody sort of suggests that there's already these businesses and industrial uses in the BCD. But built into the TIF plan, there is already a tool for relocation, for allowing the BCD to transition more quickly from industrial to residential and commercial. And if we can put industrial users in other areas and have this land left for incentivized workforce housing, housing that are great, complete neighborhoods where people really want to live and are part of a connected east-west transportation system, I think we have a real opportunity to fulfill the promise that we have of this extraordinary stretch of land right in the center of our town that could provide not just density, but wonderful neighborhoods where working families can afford to and really want to live. So that's my thoughts on that.
Great, thank you, Anthony. How about Megan?
I'm going to get on the BCD train here myself and talk about, yeah, I mean, I think, I think the BCD, you know, I went to college in Colorado Springs. And, you know, Colorado Springs, at the time I went to college, was a city of 350,000 people that had grown very dramatically like Bend. And the downtown area of Colorado Springs was about two blocks long. And Colorado had, particularly Colorado Springs, had decided just to keep sprawling outward. So if you needed to go anywhere or be anywhere or do anything, you needed to get into your car for about 20 minutes or so. And because of that, there was no strong core in, you know, in Colorado Springs. And I think that Bend with the BCD has the opportunity to really build this really vibrant core. And like Anthony said, really be a jewel, you know, for our city. You know, not only is it, is it, you know, good for the city to, you know, have a more attractive place, it's also good for the environment. It, you know, provides, you know, multimodal, you know, housing and working environments. And it built, you know, the opportunity to sort of build up rather than, you know, sprawl to the edge of the city. And, you know, with, with, you know, sort of a connected transportation plan, I think that, you know, being able to walk or bike to stores or work, you know, is such an important component of this. And, you know, we need to develop complete neighborhoods. And Ben, you shouldn't have to live in Northwest Crossing like I do to live in a complete neighborhood. You should be able to, you know, to walk or bike or easily get to, you know, all the essentials that you need to, you know, to shop, to live, to recreate. And this is a way of doing that. And I think that there are, you know, ways to really incentivize, you know, great diverse housing in the BCD.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go to Melanie.
Thanks Kathy. Yeah, I support the tax increment financing plan for the core area. I think we have a really good core area plan. If folks haven't seen on the city website, maybe we could pop a link or something. But some of the visualizations of what it could look like down there with people walking and biking, with the commercial and housing mixed, it's a really cool idea, and I agree, I think it's a really great plan for the future. I do, so I support kind of what everyone has already said. You know, I think the city has a role to play in holding developers accountable and other development accountable in that area so that we aren't experiencing gentrification, which is the typical pushback that we see about these urban renewal-type tax increment plans. I think we can do that, and I think we want to make sure that while some uses are not going to be appropriate there anymore, like industrial use, you know, so there are people that live there now, there are local businesses there now that we do want to preserve and make sure we're not pushing them out. So as long as we are maintaining as a city that accountability and pushing for that, I think it will be a really great chance to have some key development there that will also add housing units while creating a great space for everyone to come and visit and live. So I'm totally supportive of that.
That's great. I just want to add, before I get to Rita, I just want to add one thing. There is a big chunk of the money that's set aside for affordable housing in that plan. And then also builders who want to go higher to do, they'll do a density bonus. It has to be affordable housing. So there is some mechanisms built into the plan in order to provide that affordable housing. So Rita, how about you?
This makes me really, really excited when we talk about the BCD and the core area plan because we just know how scarce housing is in general in Bend. And so for there to be a bigger conversation about really implementing a way for us to have housing and not only have housing, but have housing in a way to connect the entire city. Because anyone who's lived in Bend knows that there's this huge disconnect between the east side and the west side. Everyone says it, everyone's like, are you going to the east side of town? Are you going to the west side of town? Which El Sancho are you going to? We all talk about it. And so the BCD is really going to create that connection. And also, it makes me very excited about, as someone who lives on the east side, well, eastern side, I don't want to, it depends what you think of around the division in town. But getting really excited to be able to go to the west side in a safe way, just as someone who likes to bike and walk, really crossing onto the west side and going through downtown can be quite dangerous. And so not only will this increase housing units and give us more places for the working professionals, a place to live, but it will also increase that connectivity and will honestly, I think, encourage a lot of humans to bike, to scooter, and to walk across town when Bend is pretty compact. And so we really have the capability for that.
That's great. I do want to comment that it's a good thing you all are very young because it is a 30-year horizon for the BCD to develop. And it'll be at least 10 years before there's enough funding there to really get things going. But you have to plan, you have to do advanced planning, and I think it's a really good example. Okay, so we're going to move on to something else. Micro units and small homes. Small homes are part of the HB 2001 we've been working on. And it's essentially a tiny home on a foundation. The micro unit is not in direct response to HB 2001. It's a direction that the city council gave staff to look at options for single-room occupancy type of development. And we're, they've changed name, they're called micro units, but many people are familiar with the term SRO. And it's a single room, it has its own bathroom facility, minor kitchen-ish prep area, but it's a very modest unit. And it caused a lot of consternation with the neighborhood associations because the proposal was to put it on any residential lot. Now, keep in mind that there are still setbacks and height limitations with all of these alternative housing types, but they are at a higher density. And so they are going to be different than a single-family home, for sure. So the planning commission received our recommendations from our stakeholder group for these zoning changes. And they approved everything except on the micro units. They recommended they not be allowed in the lower residential or standard residential unless in the standard residential, they were part of a neighborhood commercial development. And I think this was in part in response to concerns from the neighborhood groups that they didn't feel it was appropriate to put this type of housing in a more rural or typical suburban situation. But the proposal was to include it in all residential. So I want to get your thoughts on that. But I also want to mention that the small homes are, our tiny home village is what's proposed for the Veterans Village that's going to be located next to the Sheriff's Department on county land. And so they're going to be able to take advantage of this new code. And it could be replicated elsewhere in the town. So I wanted to ask you what your thoughts are on these kinds of housing types, the micro units and the small homes, and what you think about incentivizing them with perhaps looking at how we charge system development charges, which are called SDCs. Right now, they're the same whether the house is 1,200 square feet or 3,000 square feet. And so it's a bit of a disincentive to do the smaller homes. And it's something that I personally feel needs to be addressed. So I'm putting it out there for you guys to talk about. This time, I'm going to start with Megan, then Rita, Melanie, and Anthony. So Megan, your thoughts?
I absolutely agree that we should incentivize builders to build these homes. Because, I mean, if you, if you look at it from a builder perspective, why would you build a home that costs as much as, like you said, a 3,000-square-foot home? I think that these have the potential, these micro units particularly, have the potential to, you know, sort of fill in this gap of, you know, we talked about, a lot about this sort of missing middle, and so this is this other gap, right? Of, you know, people that really just need, you know, who are, you know, are not making a large income and really just need, you know, basic amenities and need a place to live in Bend. You know, they're saying though, that the, you know, that they could be like 900 to, you know, 1,100, $1,200 a month, which still is, you know, pretty, pretty high for, for most people. I think that the, you know, positives of the fact that, you know, they, from an environmental standpoint, they use less resources, a lot of these places are going to be, you know, certified, environment certified. And I absolutely think that they should be, you know, in all of our neighborhoods, not just, not just pushed off to the side like we often do with affordable housing. I think that could be, you know, a really exciting thing for young professionals, especially if they find sort of a, like, you know, create a sort of a common area, you know, with kitchens, with community, more community living, you know, standpoint. Because like you said, right now, it's just a bathroom and a living and sleeping, you know, space. I think because of, you know, due to COVID and a lot of our essential workers and, you know, our Bend workers are losing jobs or jobs that are just not potentially going to come back for a long time, particularly in the tourism sector and other sectors, there's a lot of potential to have this be, you know, you know, a safe place to call home and, you know, near to amenities that maybe, you know, normally if they were in, you know, housing way off at the edge of the city, they wouldn't be able to be in. So I support them and I hope that, you know, when it does go before the city council, that the city council sort of changes, changes it so that they can be in all residential areas.
Great, thank you. I wanted to mention just before I get to you, Rita, that the planning commission added that we should include laundry facilities as well as the common kitchen. And so we will be revising that before it goes back to the council to include that information. So Rita, your thoughts?
Kathy, I'm really glad that you said that because that was kind of going to be a little bit of my feedback, just as someone who would probably be renting a micro unit. You know, I really like to cook, and so not having any access to cook, I think really puts a block around the affordability piece because I think a lot of the ways that young professionals kind of, we try and make it more affordable as we cook our own food. And Bend has the most amazing farmer's market and all of this access to fresh produce. And so being able to still do that, so it makes me excited to hear a little bit about that co-housing cottage-village feel. I think that could be really great for the community aspect. Young professionals who maybe don't have a family yet are really looking for connection and how to do that in a constructive way. I do think it would be so incredibly important to have them in the residential areas because it's just, as we spoke about, I think in one of our previous questions, like, how do we bring diversity into the neighborhoods? And that would be a way to do that. And just to, you know, really bring many voices to the table. The SDC part is very interesting to me as you were describing it. I was like, oh, you'll just get charged the same amount? And so it really doesn't bring, it does create another kind of barrier, like, well, then you're not really getting the benefit. You have this very small home, and you're intentionally trying to make this small footprint, and then you're still getting charged the same as someone who has a single-family home. And so I definitely would want to see a little bit of shifting around those charges and how to really create some equity around that. So thank you.
You're welcome. And let's see, Melanie?
Thanks Kathy. So yeah, I'm supportive. Thank you in your group for the work that you did on the micro homes code because I think it's really great. And I think I love to hear the laundry amendment too. Because yeah, I think the idea is, these are not homes for every kind of person to live in, but they are homes that are going to be more accessible for people that need that type of housing at that point in their life. And that kind of shared amenities helps to reduce their own personal costs, hopefully, and get them somewhere to live. And I know also that these micro units can be styled in a way that they can help with a topic we're going to talk about next, I think, which is our houseless population and helping get them into a safe and stable home in a way that is accessible and affordable, you know, for people that need that. So I definitely support these. I'd also support the idea of looking at our SDC methodology. And I think Rita just hit it, what's the, what's the equity there? Especially with, we set some goals about what type of housing we want to see in Bend. We need to look at what all the barriers are to that type of housing and then just address whether we can make changes there to, to lower some of those barriers. So I'm definitely open to talking about that in the future, for sure.
Great. Okay, Anthony, your thoughts?
Yeah, I can be very brief. I would agree with what everybody has said, and I support this approach. I think part of it again is laying the groundwork as a city government to what is actually going to pencil. Obviously, these would be, these would be for a particular market in Bend. But I also think that something that you and I have talked about before, Kathy, not a silver bullet, but let's look aggressively at surplusing land where we want these types of units to be. There's not much land left on the inventory that would be available to that. But I think that if we can provide pilot, you know, examples of this to developers, it will show these projects will, can, work, and are going to be great parts of neighborhoods, places where you want to be a neighbor and kind of dispel some of the, I think, unfair optics or at least rumors about what these types of units would be. I think they would be extraordinary. I support them, and I think they're an important tool of my approach to affordable housing, which is more everything. We need to do more of everything. We are so far behind the eight ball. So, you know, let's buckle down and work.
Great, I agree. Thank you so much. And the units, these micro units do have a counter space, and they can have a under-counter refrigerator. They have hookup for a toaster oven or a microwave. So there can be individual food prep within each space. But we don't want to call them apartments. It's something different. And as soon as you put a kitchen into them, then they're apartments. So this is something that's a step smaller than apartments, and that's why we have the shared kitchen and dining area. Okay, let's move on to the next topic. And we're going to talk about supporting a houseless population or homeless or houseless population in town. So Bend desperately needs a warming shelter coming up this winter. It is a huge issue. It was in, I believe, the Sheriff's Department this last winter, but they can't do it. And so there are people working very hard. Our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee did give them about $75,000 towards enacting this. But finding a place is really going to take, I believe, some, some help from the private sector. There's kind of a limit as to how much the city council can do, but I still want to get your opinions on the need. There was another House bill passed. See, the legislature has been very proactive, and I want people to understand that. HB 4212 was passed in June as an emergency legislative session. And it was a revision of something that didn't get passed, which was HB 4001. And it allows homeless shelters to be built by right, that they can be located and built pretty much anywhere. So the problem is, of course, finding a place, putting all the financing together and so forth. Right now, the city is actively working with four different groups on shelter options. We are expecting an application for the Veterans Village and from St. Vincent de Paul within the next few weeks. So it is ongoing, things are happening. And I'd like to hear each of your thoughts on the need and any creative solutions or ideas that you have. This time, I'm going to start with Anthony, then Rita, Megan, and Melanie.
Thanks Kathy. This council has allowed homelessness to fall 12% year over year. That was before COVID-19. We are going to be facing a much bigger issue as a community this year, next year, in the coming years as people's economic crises. We are hurting as a community. These are going to crystallize into more people losing their homes, more people falling into homelessness, more people who are falling from being housed into less, to more transitional situations. It would be naive for us to think that as a community, we're not going to have a much more acute homeless problem. And our house's population will be suffering even more. I think we've really squandered the opportunity to use CARES Act, CRF dollars to, which could have been spent this calendar year, to remedy the COVID impact on our homeless population. We obviously need to centralize services. We need to do more to serve the homeless citizens of Bend so that we can do what we all know we need to do, and that is reduce homelessness, prevent homelessness, get people into stable housing. The obvious first step of that is a permanent centralized facility where we are protecting people from dying of the cold. And so a permanent winter shelter is, everything else is somewhat academic if we're not squarely focused on that as a community. And I wish, I really wish we had done more with CRF dollars when we had the opportunity to do that. So that's where I would start, but I don't think that's the whole.
Right. I will, I will say that our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee did take advantage of CARES Act dollars for the groups that administer to the homeless. So we, for programs, we were able to give funding for that. But the chunk of money was so enormous to do this shelter that we would have not been able to give money to anybody else if we had given everything to them. So, you know, there's only so much money to go around. But we, I do want you to know that we did take advantage of the CARES Act to the extent that we could. Rita, your thoughts?
I mean, the reality is, is the approach to not already having a permanent warming shelter is inhumane. We all live in Bend, we all know what the winter is like. And so there's no pretending that in a couple months, it's not going to be freezing, and there are going to be people who will be dying of the cold. And so the reality is, is Bend City Council really needs to prioritize the entire community. And it really is just, it's quite harmful. So I'm, that's my opinion. I think that when we're looking for locations for a permanent warming shelter, it needs to be in a place that's central. And I'm not quite sure where that location is, but it needs to be a place where there's accessibility. I mean, if we're only having a warming shelter that only has one function, maybe that warming shelter needs to be closer to places where people can get food or where people can really access the jobs that they are trying to get instead of putting it somewhere away where it's hiding, where the reality, we all know that there is a houseless population in Bend. And so instead of kind of pushing them away, bringing them in and bringing them to a place where they feel safe and where they can survive until it warms up.
Great, all right, thank you so much. Megan, your turn.
I think, you know, before we talk about homelessness in general, we sort of have to talk about two things. One is that we really need to address the systemic problems that create homelessness. I don't feel like our city has, has done that. And secondly, just like our activists are not busting from Portland every day, our homeless are not busting from Portland. They are our neighbors, and we need to treat them like our neighbors. And if our neighbors are in need of something, we need to, we need to respond to that. You know, I think that every year, it seems like the city council is sort of surprised that this issue comes up. And so, you know, I agree with Anthony and Rita. I mean, we need to be proactive about this. And we need to, you know, to have the plans in place for a permanent warming shelter. We need to be creative about, about how we're going about this. And, you know, COVID is just going to, is just going to increase this problem. You know, you know, almost 50% of the homeless are families and youth. And we need to be proactive. We also need to start really thinking about, you know, supportive, permanent supportive housing for a houseless population, you know, that's, that's mobile and affordable housing, that's healthcare, that's supportive services. Because we need to help individuals and families leave a more stable Because we need to help individuals and families live a more stable life so that they will not remain homeless and will, you know, will have a stable environment for themselves. And, you know, so I really am a proponent of low-barrier housing, as well as obviously, mental health outreach, partnering with the Crisis Stabilization Center, and having our city council start planning for this issue right now.
Yeah, that's great. And we do have a relatively new group called Housing First that are dealing specifically with the population that you're talking about here in town. Melanie, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, so I think, you know, everyone's covered. I agree with what folks have said about making it a priority and having the planning going on. You know, I think what the public kind of saw is the most recent example of this is Juniper Ridge. And I saw several council meetings where there was a couple councillors that were asking, "This is great that you're telling us that we're pushing those people out, but where are they going to go?" And we, as a city, need to find an answer to that question. And like everyone said, we need to find it now. It's getting, you know, the situation we're in is making it even more dire. And I agree with Anthony that we're going to see more people falling into houselessness. So I support, you know, that's why I support the housing policies that we've already talked about. I support also pushing the city to be good and maybe, I don't know if it's better or just more visible partners with our local agencies that serve our houseless population, with other local government agencies, with the county that provides mental health services, a lot of mental health services and behavioral health services, and maybe has some resources in other spaces. I know that we did use a county space last year for a warming shelter. I would love to partner with them about how do we create a permanent one and get all the buy-in from our local elected officials to make that a priority. So like I said, I think everyone has covered it, but I think that's the main thing, planning and prioritization of this issue, and making it something that the city is visibly working on and finding solutions to, and lobbying for solutions to if they don't exist already, and pushing our legislature to create solutions like the one that they did this year that can help us start moving the ball forward on actually creating some permanent space to address the issue.
Yeah, that's great. And I thought, something popped in my head while you were talking. People don't realize the vast number of children that are homeless, that it's like well over 600 kids, and that was like two years ago. And so how are they doing schooling? If they don't live someplace, they don't have any internet connection. You know, it is such a crisis. You know, and people tend to look at just the panhandlers on the corner, but that's not really what we're talking about. And the vast majority of people living at Bethlehem Inn at any one time do have jobs, and they're local, central Oregonian people who simply can't afford any place to live. And, you know, they're one illness away from catastrophe if they have no kind of insurance. So it's a complicated issue, and there are neighbors. And there, but for the grace of God, go I, frankly. So it's a really critical issue. So thank you, Fall, for addressing that. I'm going to get to our last item here. We're going to talk about social and economic equity in housing. It says, "In the past, the majority of units that have been built in Bend have been single-family homes." I work for nothing but builder developers. They're very risk adverse. That's what is easy to build. That's what they've built. But we are seeing a new trend. So for instance, as of this year, in terms of built units, I do have some numbers, forgive me. We have 685 units for completed, 567 were single-family homes. However, in the pipeline right now for permits of 1,938 homes under construction, 814 are multifamily with only 606 are single-family, and the rest are a mix of units like accessory dwelling units or townhomes or other types of units. So we are seeing a shift now, and I find that encouraging. I just would like to hear from you guys what you think about this trend and change. Also, I live on the east side, the far east side. And I know some people feel that the east side gets dumped on with all the affordable housing. But I sent and shared a graphic with you guys. It's available at the city's website under Economic Development that shows that the higher density has been spread around the city. It is equalizing to a certain degree. But the cost of land is more on the west side than the east side, and that makes it more challenging to get the affordability going there. So there is another something that I want to bring up in terms of social equity, and that is the history of racism as it's connected to zoning. And zoning came about, in part, as a way to prevent people of color from getting mortgages and excluding them and having single-family subdivisions be all white. And that's the history of single-family zoning. And so it was called redlining, and it's something that we really need to work hard to reverse now that we're in this situation. So one of my other questions aside from your reaction to what I've just said is to how do you think the Human Rights and Equity Commission can play a role moving forward in other ways of not ignoring underserved neighborhoods or inequitably placing affordable housing around town? And your thoughts on nimbyism in Bend? And that's a lot to talk about, but I'm going to start with Rita.
Well, that's just the light topic there, huh, Kathy?
It ended us on a note here.
I mean, gentrification is real. I mean, I don't think that there's any way that driving around Bend, you can't not see that. What you say to me is not surprising of what I've experienced in my own life and what people that I care about very deeply have also experienced. My hope is, is with the alternative housing units that will break down a little bit. But the reality is, is when you're looking at systemic racism, you have to be very, very, very strong. Because systemic racism has lived and has flourished for a very, very long time. And so when you're breaking down those systems and when you're breaking down those barriers, you have to be very clear. It's like, do you want inclusivity, or do you want inclusivity? And really strongly wanting inclusivity means that you're going to break down those barriers. And when people are, as you said, nimbyism, when that is happening, it's like, how are we going to address that? Are we going to be very clear and give very clear goals to break those down? Or are you just going to say, "Oh, I want diversity and equity in neighborhoods, but not in my neighborhood? I want alternative housing units so that we can work on housing scarcity, but I don't want it right here." And the reality is, is with systemic racism, it's always just not right here. We're not going to look at what's happening right in front of us. But as I look outside my window, I know that that's happening right there. And so to change the things in Bend means to break down a lot of those barriers, and that can be really, really uncomfortable. And the reality is, is the population's going to continue to grow. And so for us to decrease the houseless population, for us to increase young professionals that we want here as we want the economic, hopefully, to go a little bit up, we just really have to create a place where people can actually live and all people can actually live. And so I could talk about this for hours, but thank you so much. And what a great way to kind of get me fired up at the end of the talk.
Well, very well said. Thank you so much. And I know you're going to bring a lot to the discussion as we move forward. So thank you very much. Megan, how about you?
Oh, my gosh. I could talk about this for like the next hour. So I'll try to keep it short. Yeah, I mean, you know, we were in a neighborhood just last night, and I couldn't believe it. I was like, wow, is this neighborhood getting gentrified? But yeah, I mean, exclusionary commonwealth, zoning, you know, redlining. You know, Oregon has a, you know, really horrific history of, you know, racism as it pertains to housing. And this nimbyism really is concerning to me because I just keep seeing it getting worse. You know, we just can't assign all affordable housing, you know, to the outskirts of our city or just away from us, right? It's exclusionary, it's segregation, it's racist, it's elitist. And I feel like the city council, the city staff really need to lead the way in sort of educating our public and setting a vision about, you know, why mixed-income neighborhoods are a good thing for our city. You know, right now, the system is so complicated that really only a few people who really understand it are sort of the wealthy and connected, and we need to change that. And, you know, like Rita said, we need to break down these barriers, and we, you know, really need to set this question of, you know, like, what kind of city do we really want to live in in Bend? You know, do we really want to live in this, you know, extreme rich-poor community? Or do we want to live in a community that is diverse in every possible way? And, you know, mixed incomes, and, you know, they make for a better community. Mixed housing makes for a better community. And, you know, another aspect of this is that, you know, homeownership is like a pathway to wealth attainment in, you know, in our country. And it's often the most, you know, sort of the only, you know, the most valuable part of a sort of a portfolio for retirement. And we're creating greater inequities of wealth by making homeownership so unattainable here. And then finally, sorry, I'll try and wrap it up, but the Human Rights and Equity Commission, I think there's a real opportunity there for, you know, there's an opportunity for, it's a place for our marginalized communities to go and address issues of bias, discrimination, or hate, and that could include housing. And so I think that's really key. But also, this commission is going to be charged with really helping create more equitable policies, you know, with the city council, as well as more access to these committees that have these decisions, right, before the public. So I think that there is a huge opportunity there as it relates to housing, and I'm really excited to help shepherd it forward in January.
Oh, that's great. Thank you so much. Melanie?
Thanks, Kathy. So I think Rita and Megan have hit the nail on the head, and I'm not going to repeat what they've said about kind of the impact of these, the historic policies on communities of color in Bend. And I think the thing we need to do, and we all need to be willing to do, is to call it out, to name it, so that we can start to work back against it. I also want to say, you know, from a perspective of someone who grew up here and has seen how the city has changed and understands how the city is going to continue to change, you know, I think the council needs to lead on helping everyone in the city understand that change itself is not necessarily bad. It's not necessarily going to erase somebody's way of life or how they live in their neighborhood to have that neighborhood change. And we need to be explaining why some of these things are for the good of the neighborhood or the city, and helping people embrace that kind of change that's going to be coming as we grow as a city, as we move into the future. And that includes, you know, that neighborhoods, there's going to be all different types of neighborhoods in Bend. They're not all going to be the same. And it is interesting to look at sort of the history of this land use policy in America specifically, how towns and cities used to work, how they used to grow and evolve, and what's changed in the last decades. And to get us to where we are now, where, you know, Bend is not like a huge metropolis with sprawling, sprawling suburbs. But we have the issue of sprawl that is going to come up, and we're going to want leaders that are going to say, "No, we don't want to just sprawl out, and we don't want to make neighborhoods where you have to drive a car 20 minutes, as Megan said, to get anywhere you need to go." We want to make these more inclusive and diverse neighborhoods, and not just for housing types, but for different types of people to feel safe and to be able to live there. And that's directly tied to the boring stuff of zoning codes. You know, I mean, sorry, Kathy, it's not boring to you, but for most people, it's completely obtuse, right?
Yeah.
But having, you know, having councils that can take that lens to that, having a Human Rights and Equity Commission that can advise and help on those policies, that sets how we grow into the future and what our city looks like. And so I think that we're at a really important moment here to make those type of decisions and to really start to push back against, you know, how kind of American land use has come up in the past few decades, to try some new things and to see how we can use those policies to address not just, you know, inequities in housing, but it ties to transportation, it ties to our fight against climate change and all of that. It's all together. So I think that, yeah, this is just such a huge topic that I think all of us could talk about for a long time. But specifically in this area, yeah, I think our council has to recognize it and take that lens, equity lens, to it going forward in this policy area.
Very well said. Thank you. And Anthony, I'm going to have you wrap us up here. Anthony? Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you. Hi.
Okay, sorry. You're the last one on this.
Feel free to mute me if I have questions. You know, to me, this is just another example of what I see as our mandate from the voters of Bend, the people of Bend. They have told us, they demand more working families can stay in houses in Bend. They have told us that they want to make sure we have a safe, connected transportation system. They have told us that they want us to apply an equity lens. If we are not doing that in every decision, if we are not asking, "Does this decision make it more likely that a working family or a working person can afford to live in Bend?", then we're not making the right decision. And I think that that's true with equity. Is this housing decision furthering historical racist systems that we need to undo, that we need to dismantle? And if the answer to that is no, we have to reevaluate the decisions that we're making. So I think it's facile to say it here, but every decision that comes before us, is this conducive with our climate action plan? Is this conducive with our mandate to make a more just city? Is this conducive to our requirement that every decision we are making is going to eliminate traffic fatalities and injuries? Is this making Bend a fair place to live? And so to me, equity is on par with all of those, and it's key with any housing decision we're making. I'm just, I'm glad that these are issues that are now being, you know, addressed at the council level, and I would hope to continue to make that.
Well, that's great. I've gotten a message that we have a question from Phil Chang, and I've been asked to go ahead and read that. And I might give some response, and then I open it up to any of you to just jump in on it. It says, "If there are opportunities," let's see. Okay. "After we're allowed to build more small footprint housing, how do we get builders to build it?", question mark. "If it is more profitable to build high-end, single-family homes or even to build luxury condominiums instead of more modest multifamily homes, how do we get past that or through an incentive structure?" And that is the big question. Because everything that gets built has to make money. Even if you're a nonprofit builder, you need money so that you can then build the next project. And so one of the things I think is really important is to address the SDC issue. Because I have heard from some larger builders that if the SDCs were more proportionate to the size of the units, it would make much more sense then to build those units. Because there will be a sweet spot where they are profitable. And the city can control those fees. Now, I will say the fees are impact fees, and it's going to not be a simple thing for you guys when you're elected to wave your wand. It's going to take something to work through, but I believe that that is one area that can really make a big difference. And then also, there are incentives about density bonuses. Maybe we could look at that and make it more enticing. It is a difficult, it's a difficult thing to do. What we're doing right now, what the city is doing right now, is getting out of the way. We're eliminating the impediments to doing these things. The next step is getting it done. And I wanted to ask you, all four of you, if there are any of you want to just jump in and say anything in response to Phil's question on that.
I'll say just briefly, I think one of the things, one of the strategies I'm going to take as a councillor for these types of questions is try to think creatively, you know, and try to identify those barriers wherever we can. One thing that we didn't touch on, I don't think yet, was parking minimums, which are a requirement in the code that if you build X units, you have to build X parking spots. That takes away space on the lot to build housing. It's expensive. It's a barrier. You know, I'd like to eliminate or reduce those as much as possible wherever we can in our code to help get that to pencil out better. But yeah, I think the other tactic I'm going to take is, you know, I think we have experts in town like Kathy. I think we have a great knowledge base here that can help us to figure out how to do this. And I think as councillors, that's what I'm going to be saying is, let's let people bring creative solutions. Let's look at different things. Let's try different things and see how they work. You know, one big area that we're going to have to have a discussion on is the SDCs, but I think there's other creative things that we can do. I was talking with someone today who was talking about creating templates for certain types of multifamily projects and saying, "Hey, if you..." for certain types of multifamily projects and saying, hey, if you fall within this little template for your project, you're fast-tracked, right? You get to build your project faster. And for developers that want to, you know, build and, and turn it over and build again, that might be an incentive to do that. So those are just creative ideas that I've heard. Um, and I just think that we're going to, the attitude that I want to take is, let's do everything we can and every way we can to try to incentivize this to happen. And I'm hoping that once we get a few of these things built and they work well and they, you know, they work for those builders, that that will show other builders that it's possible. So I don't have all the answers, but I have a lot of ideas to explore, and I think that's what we're going to have to be doing, um, in the next few years on this.
Yeah, a part of the big costs are, um, road and infrastructure. Uh, and so with the tax increment financing, a big part of that is the city will be helping to put in the kind of public road infrastructure that reduces the cost for the developer to do that. That's one of the great things about that location and that program. So off-site costs are a big part. Parking, parking, um, minimums have been reduced significantly in the proposals that we're going forward. Some people would like to eliminate them entirely. Um, it's a tough one, um, because of, parking is the one thing you will always hear about when you're on the city council. It was the first thing that came out of people's mouths when I was sitting on my city council. So, yeah, parking, 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 parking. Anyway, anybody else want to jump in on that? And also, I want to ask, were there any other, um, chat, uh, questions I should address? Um, go ahead and send them to me. I, I'm not seeing any right now. Oh, wait, here we go. Let's see, let me look at it. Um. How would you build a working relationship with Core and Koba, who have traditionally opposed most affordable housing efforts? You know, actually, I don't think that they are opposed now because of the fact that you can't find anybody to work for you because they have no place to live. But I think that is something that we could, um, we could definitely, you guys, if you're on the city council, um, invite that conversation. Um, I think the key is finding common ground and common goals that you can, uh, work towards. You know, it may not be, compromise is not a bad word in my, in my vocabulary. And so there might be ways of finding common ground. Are there any other chat, uh, questions? Let me look real quick. No, that's it for right now. Um, I'm going to turn it back over to Nancy. Well, were there any other candidates that wanted to weigh in? I'm sorry, she's reminding me, I didn't ask anybody else. They're shaking their head, no, Nancy, so maybe you want to... Uh, let's see, speaking of connected, let me see, she sent me something. This is from Casey Roats, our past mayor. Are the candidates supporting the transportation bond? It plays a major role in whether or not there are any funds to do anything you opposing. There isn't any extra money down there to be had without the bond passing, I should know. I really tried to find any extra my four years there and didn't. This candidate forum is great, thanks to the candidates for making themselves available. Well, I'm a big supporter of the bond, and I am in their listing of people who are supporting. So let me hear from everybody else.
Um, I was just talking to someone about the bond and the plan this weekend. Um, and it's a really great first step. It's a really good way for us to start the conversation about connectivity in Bend. Um, and that's what I hope. We, it is the first step, and we will continue to move forward with plans. Um, and we will continue to work together, uh, and not just stop there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I jump in real quick?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that this transportation bond and the transportation system plan are sort of, you know, what, this is what happens when you have a real community effort and you really listen to the community. Um, you know, it kind of ties into the last question about how, you know, would we build sort of a rapport with the builders and the realtors? You know, this effort represents that, that coming together of, you know, the environmental center, um, and, you know, the, the biking community, um, you know, and, and these realtors and those builders. And so, yes, I support the bond. Um, like Rita said, it's a, it's a great first step. Um, and I think it will really help us build a more connected community in, in more ways than just transfer, transportation.
Um, I do have one more question here. And then I'll let you all answer whatever you want, just a second here. This is, uh, oh, Nancy, go ahead and send me the one from David Welton. And I'll read it. Uh, in the meantime, um, did either the ones of you that haven't spoken yet about the bond want to say something?
Sure, yeah, Kathy. Um, I think we both should probably answer this so that everyone knows where all four of us are. But yeah, I support, um, the transportation bond, and for the same reasons that Megan just said. And I do think that, um, that the list of projects is something that, um, has been identified of all different places around town that we need to invest in transportation. I'm really excited, especially about the multimodal, um, projects that are in that list. Um, and I plan, you know, to, when we're looking at where are we going to start and where are we going to prioritize, I really want to look at safety and connectivity, both, um, when we're, when we're looking at where we're going to start with transportation investment. Um, but I, I am supporting it, and I'm glad that we're going to have, hopefully, a lot of Bendites weighing in on that and letting us know the direction they want to move with that investment. Um, and if we can get that money and start moving forward, um, in the next couple of years, that's going to be a great help to make that foundation for some of these housing goals to, to live on. So I do support it.
I also, um, I also support the bond. I think it's an important investment in our future. It's not perfect. I think that this is often the feeling that people have when they look at a successful bond. And I'm hopeful that the voters will decide that it's important to invest in east-west connections, safety, um, and the things we all know we need. This is 20% of what we're likely going to spend over the next 20 years on transportation in Bend, $1.16 billion. So this is an important first step. And, uh, I'm hopeful that the voters will see it, see it that way as an important investment in the future.
I will add one thing in terms of affordability, that, um, there are projects that have died on the vine because the cost of off-site improvements, like putting in roundabouts or improving intersections are just so expensive, they can't make their projects pencil. And so that, one of the benefits of this bond is that it will take care of those kinds of improvements that then make housing more affordable. So it, it's, when I said before, compromise is not a bad word. Uh, I think this is the kind of thing, we, we really need to bring the entire community in to see that it benefits everybody in every way, but nobody's getting everything. And, uh, you know, it, it is the reality of life. If, if everybody, if one group was super happy and another group really unhappy, nothing would get done. So, um, I think, um, Nancy, I'm not understanding this last question. I think it, it says, speaking of connected, as public figures who have to face elections, how will you sell some of these ideas to the broader community who are perhaps focused on the notion of post-World War II car-oriented suburbs? I guess basically, how, how are you going to communicate? I, some of you have talked about this before, the need to communicate to people why, um, these kinds of livable communities are important, and they're not going to necessarily change the way of life people have been used to. In, anyone wish to weigh in on that? You know, of, of specifically how you would do an outreach. I, I will say, the neighborhood, um, organizations, the NLA have, um, I've heard, have, would like to have a program, uh, to reach out to the community explaining some of these things. So maybe as, as a council, you could direct staff to prepare a program that can then go out to the different neighborhood groups when they have their meetings to help explain some of this information, and then go to different sections of town to help with, uh, staff in presenting that. That might be one thing you could do.
Um, Kathy, I'll, I'll comment a little bit. So I think, um, there can sometimes be a narrative around affordable housing that buys into the myth that only certain types of people live in affordable housing. Maybe they're people in poverty, maybe they, people think stereotypically it's people in color. Um, and I think, as leaders in the community, we can push back against that narrative. We can show off some of the affordable housing projects that we have and how they've helped the community. And, um, you know, I think that that's one place where we can start to shape the narrative going forward. Again, I think if we get some of this stuff in, um, you know, every time I drive by the Core Land Trust on 27th with those cute little cottages, I'm like, that looks awesome. And I'm just thinking of the families that are going to be living there and how great it's going to be for them to have that opportunity to have that kind of home. Um, so I think it's a lot about this kind of storytelling. And I also talked with somebody early on in my campaign who told me, um, that, that, you know, she had a family member that moved to Bend with his young family. They had to stay with her for many months because they couldn't find a place to rent. Uh, that family member was a police officer, okay? This is not people that are like, you know, down and out on their luck or just in total... These are working professionals that cannot find a place to live. I think we just really need to change the narrative about housing and what affordable and accessible and attainable housing really is, and start to get people to understand that's why we want a duplex there instead of a single-family home. Um, and I think also, you know, I, I also thought, when I looked at David's question, like, getting people out of their cars and into other modes of transportation and showing them, I mean, honestly, like riding a bike, if you, if you're in a safe place in town, you're riding a bike, it's great. It feels good, you're being healthy, um, you can see people, and you might see a neighbor, and you actually get to say hi and wave instead of being in your box of a car. I mean, just kind of changing the idea of like, that's what we want to build, a neighborhood where you could just bike down to the corner store to get your six-pack to watch the Blazers game, right? Like, we want to build that for you. We don't want, we're not trying to destroy your neighborhood, we're trying to enhance and, and make it better. So I think that's some of the narrative that leaders can be talking about to try to sell these ideas. Um, because I agree with, America in general has sort of got stuck in this mindset of what a neighborhood looks like necessarily, and it doesn't have to be that way. And it wasn't always that way historically either. So I think we can get there, but we have to talk about it and kind of do some of the storytelling on, on what these houses actually mean to people.
So there was a suggestion that maybe we have a parade of affordable homes. Instead of the parade of the new highest-end, most expensive homes, let's have a parade of affordable homes. I think we could get a lot of, uh, people excited about that, so that's a possibility. Um, I, we have five minutes till this is over, and I want to ask Nancy, um, how are we doing? Um, should I ask for closing comments from the counselor, uh, candidates? Or what, what should I be doing here? You're going to send me a message, right? I think it would be nice to have everybody have a closing statement, yeah. So I, I think I'm going to go in, um, and just a random order. How about Rita? How about you, your closing statement?
Uh, thanks, Kathy. This was so awesome. It was so great to talk with the rest of the slate and really learn from you and learn more about the codes. Um, I'm very excited about the parade of affordable homes. Um, as a runter in Bend, I mean, this is one of, um, one of the huge parts of my platform. Like, how, how do we make it so that humans can live here in Bend? Like, how do we do that? How do we get that basic need met? And I just, I can't wait. I can't wait to continue to have these conversations and really enact some systemic change. So thank you.
That's great. Um, Megan, how about you?
Um, yes, I mean, this was, this was really, really wonderful. And, um, it sounds cheesy, but every time the four of us get together in one of these forums, I get more and more excited about the future and the potential for us all to work together in the city council. Um, yeah, I just want to kind of, yeah, like what Melanie was saying, you know, I really truly believe with, with, uh, housing and with transportation, and even with childcare, you know, if you build it, they will come, right? So if, if these things exist and people see them and see that, that they are successful, and that, you know, as city councilors, we are setting that vision for the community and going into these communities to talk to them, not expecting them to come to us. Um, I think that we have the potential for, uh, to really change some things in the city for the better and to make everybody feel, um, that they are a part of our city, that they are partners in our decision-making, um, and that we have, you know, a diversity in every sense of the word that we are really proud to call home.
That's great, thank you. Anthony, how about you?
Yes, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Kathy, thank you, Indivisible and Vocal Seniority. Um, I, I think if we incentivize as a community the housing that we all know we need, whether that's through deregulation, whether that's through a more dynamic, um, SDC program, industry will tell us what they want to give us, the housing that we all know we need. If we provide the infrastructure, the east-west connections, the safe routes to school, the safe routes to shopping, the safe routes to your, to your place at work, we will have more affordable housing in places where it's responsible to build it. If we have inter-unit diversity, so I can't believe we've gotten to this point already, and nobody cited David Welton's favorite statistic, which is, we didn't have a building code in Bend until 1947. So if we have inter-unit diversity, that means if we have an apartment building and on the top floor it's affordable, the next floor is, uh, 90% to 120%. We are doing our job to provide housing to people who live in Bend. Making sure that people who are working here can afford to live here. Um, this is the existential issue of, um, not just the next four years, but our city. Um, and so I'm, I'm grateful that there are so many people, brilliant people who are committed, um, like all of you that I see on my screen here, to making sure, um, that this is a just, um, and, and accessible, affordable place for people to rent and buy. So thanks, everybody.
Great, thank you. Melanie, I'm going to give you the last word, and then Nancy's probably going to weigh in a bit. So let's be quick.
Sure, yeah. No, I'll be quick. Um, I, yeah, I'm really excited to have this conversation. Um, I'm excited to dig into details on this. I'm excited to find creative solutions and keep pushing in the direction we're already going. Um, we have to be bold here, we've got to try new things. Um, and we got to move forward in a way that's going to be equitable to everybody that's moving here and lives here. Um, so I see housing policy, um, through the lens of, of equity, as we talked about, through the lens of climate, through the lens of how our transportation system is going to develop. And I really, what my endgame vision is, is that we're having neighborhoods in Bend that are those 15-minute neighborhoods where you can walk or bike down to where you want to eat or play, where you work, where you go to school, and where you live. It's all connected, and that is shown to increase people's happiness. Um, I think that's what we want to do while providing that affordability and accessibility to people that are living here. Um, so I'm really excited that, um, we have a bunch of great candidates running that all, I think, agree that that's what Bend's future needs to look like, and that's what we need to plan for. Thanks.
Thank you. That was, it's been so exciting to talk to all of you and hear your points of view and share, um, all these issues. And I'm going to leave it over to Nancy now because we are right at the end of our time.
That's how I like it, where I don't have to, um, speak very long at all. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. And thank you, Kathy Austin, for your amazing, um, uh, subject matter expert, expertise, and for moderating this event and adding, um, a lot of context for us. I have learned so much tonight, and I am so excited about this slate of candidates that happen also to be indivisible, indivisible Bend's endorsements. And, um, I'm so excited to be supporting all of you. And, um, this is what I've been hoping for, is that we have a bunch of candidates with great imaginations that can, uh, that see a vision for Bend and can, can share that with everybody, and you, you guys are all excited. So, um, anyway, I have, I do need to announce also that we do have two more roundtables coming up. Um, we are finalizing the dates on those, they got switched, uh, shifted around a little bit. But we will have a, a roundtable on climate, and we will also have a roundtable to discuss COVID. Um, just keep your eye on your inboxes, we'll be emailing that information out and posting it on our Facebook pages and, um, and Twitter accounts. And thank you, the Vocal Seniority, Sid Snyder, my, um, partner in crime, and Amber back there in the background, hiding behind the indivisible logo, um, indivisible Bend logo. And thank you, everybody, for joining us and your questions.
And will you be posting this?
Yes, thank you, Kathy. We will be posting this in 24 hours. It will be, it will be posted on the Vocal Seniority's, um, YouTube page. So be sure to check that out, and it will notify you of the posting, um, on our Facebook pages, so.
And I noticed there were a couple of book titles that were recommended during this, and I was wondering if you might want to post them someplace as well.
Yeah, I can certainly do that.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. The two book titles were The Color of, of, The Color of Blah, and When Affirmative Action Was, Was White. Yeah. So we'll get those posted on, on the Facebook pages, but...
And, and I do want to mention one thing, the city of Bend does have a website about the Affordable Housing Committee and what we do and what the programs are, and there's some interesting graphics there. And I recommend, if people want to know a little bit more, to just go to the city of Bend's website and just type in affordable housing, and you'll get some information.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.